I know, right?
We want to welcome you to our Leavenworth City Commission meetings. We ask that you turn off the silence on cellphones. Meetings are televised every day on Channel Two at 7:00 PM and at midnight. After we have our pledge of allegiance, we would like to pay our respect and have a moment of silence for one of our former mayors who passed away earlier today, Mr. David Moulton.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda, consideration of previous meeting minutes, minutes from June 4th, 2019, special, uh, special meeting. If no comments, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the minutes from June 4th, 2019, special meeting as presented.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, five zero. Next item on the agenda, second consideration ordinance, number eight one zero zero, rescind special use permits.
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners, this item is for second consideration. It was on first consideration at the June 4th meeting, and this is to rescind a special use permit for a daycare center that was located at 2001 Tenth Avenue. It has gone out of business and the owner has asked for the permit to be rescinded.
All right. This requires a roll call, starting with Commissioner Priceinger.
Aye.
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 Vote passes, five zero. Next item, citizen participation. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to address the city commission, any topics that's not pertaining to the agenda tonight? If not, moving on. Uh, number three, 2018 general obligation bonds and temporary notes, insurance proceedings, present results of bond and note sales.
City Clerk Carla Williamson will handle this item again.
Uh, Mayor and Commissioner, the sale of the bonds and the temp notes was conducted at 10 o'clock this morning, and before you, I have a little analysis that was put together for, from our financial advisor on kind of the bond issue. We are going to be looking at pages seven and eight of that, and I'll go through and let you know what the bids were on those. There are several items under this, um, this agenda item that will need your action. I'll go through and I'll present the bids and then give you the, um, the recommendation by staff, and then you can go through and do each of the, um, the actions. So, on the temporary notes, um, series A, 2019, they're going to be in the amount of $7,430,000. We had two bidders on that, Hutchinson, Shockley, Shocky, Early and Company, um, at a rate of 1.840119% and Oppenheimer and Company Incorporated at 2.119010%. The winning bidder on that would be Hutchinson, Shockly, Shocky, and Early Company. On the bonds, series 2019A, um, the final amount that we're going to be bonding is 1,340,000. The original estimation was going to be 1,400,000, but, um, the winning bidder offered a premium on that also, so we don't need to bond quite as much on that. So, the bids on those, Robert W. Baird and Company at 2.139284%, Hutchinson, Shocky, Early and Company, 2.154285%, Commerce Bank, 2.167854%, First Bankers Bank Security, 2.232658%, UMB Bank, 2.264554%, and Bernardi Securities, 2.293848%. So, the winning bid on that was, um, Robert W. Baird and Company, um, and I have just a couple of notes, um, from Greg Varnberg, um, the financial advisor. Just wanted to, um, have me reiterate that the city received, um, and a rating of an AA2 rating for the bonds and notes, and the ratings are well above the average and reflect the sound financial management of the city, which helped us get a favorable low interest rates. The closing of the issue is scheduled for June 27th, so once we get everything signed and back to our bond attorney and off to the state for approval, um, that it will close on that date and they're going to be issued. So, the following actions are required. I'll need a motion to accept the proposals for the temporary notes. We'll need a motion to adopt resolution 2224, issuing the temporary notes. We'll need a motion to approve the, um, the bid for the, um, proposal for the bonds, and then we'll need a proposal to adopt resolution 2225. And then the second consideration for ordinance, 8101, will be the real roll call vote.
All right.
If you have any questions, I can answer them for you.
Hi.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Williamson, I've asked this question before, but just out of curiosity, maybe Ms. Mullane, our financial director, can answer it. It's just, uh, why did they go down to the one millionth of a percent? I mean, they, uh, does anyone know? We always get them down to literally the one millionth of one percent.
Yeah.
It's, is anyone know the reason behind that? Just...
Just trying to be more...
Yeah.
There's no...
Yeah. Because they can, I think is the...
I mean, even on 1.4 million, which is a lot of money, one millionth of a percent amounts to a quarter of a cent, you know, 1.4 cents or less.
Yeah.
1.4 cents. Okay. I'm just curious.
So, are we going to need four separate motions?
Yeah.
Um, one, two, three, four separate motions and a roll call vote, yes.
Okay.
All right. There's no other comments?
Mr. Mayor, I move, uh, I'm sorry, were there other comments? I didn't hear.
No.
No. Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept proposals, temporary note sales, series A, 2019.
I'll second it.
Motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, five zero.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt resolution B, 2224, issuance of A, 2019, temporary notes.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Priceinger.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, five zero. Next item?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept proposals for the general obligation bond, series 2019A.
I'll second it.
Motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, five zero. Next item?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept resolution B, 2225, general obligation bond, series 2019-A.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Priceinger.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, five zero. Uh, next item requires a roll call, second consideration ordinance, eight one oh one, general obligation bond, series 2019-A. Uh, begin voting with Comis-, oh, go ahead. Just roll call?
Yes.
Begin voting with Commissioner Priceinger.
Aye.
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 Vote passes, five zero. Next item on the agenda, resolutions, B, 2226, establishing and setting the start date of elected officials.
City Clerk Carla Williamson?
Uh, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, um, this is an item that we talked about at the study session on May 21st, um, in regards to Senate Bill 105 that was signed by the governor, and this has to do with the, um, the ability for cities to set the date that they can have their elected officials take office. It was, um, agreed on by consensus at that study session to have that date changed to the first Tuesday in December. The, uh, state statute requires the cities do a resolution, um, uh, to, to make this go into effect, so this is the resolution portion of it. We're also going to have to do an ordinance, um, to change the ordinance in our code of ordinance, so, um, we'll revisit this again in a couple of items under first consideration for an ordinance also, so it's kind of, um, kind of a double, double whammy on that one. So, um, this would just be the ordinance and would just require, um, a, a motion and ordn-, uh, vote on that. If anybody has any questions, I can answer them.
Commissioner Priceinger, you got any comments?
No.
No.
We discussed it.
All right. At this time, I entertain a motion.
I move we adopt resolution B, 2226, as presented.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Priceinger.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, five zero. Uh, next item on the agenda, uh, bids, contracts, and agreements, consider bids for refuse bags.
Deputy Public Works Director Mike Cooper will handle this item.
Thank you, Taylor. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Uh, this item tonight is for the annual bidding of our, uh, trash bags that the city sells through the city clerk's office, the, uh, street department, as well as distribute to the citizens twice a year, I believe it's in April and August. Finance put together the bid package, uh, requested proposals from suppliers. Uh, we received, uh, I believe it was five bids, and those items are listed in your, in your packet as well as the results of the, uh, compliance check for it to meet the specifications. So, at this, this time, uh, staff is recommending that, uh, the commission approved Jadcor, Inc., at a cost of one... Five, ten...
Hundred and seventeen.
Yeah, hundred and seventeen thousand.
Yeah, hundred and seventeen thousand, three hundred.
Three hundred dollars.
Five dollars and ten cents.
And, yes. And Steve King is here to answer any questions that we may come up with.
And this is the same company that produced the bags, uh, this past year as well.
What did we pay for them last time?
Last time?
Five fifty-six.
Yeah. Five fifty-six.
They're cheaper.
Good, good, good.
Yeah.
It's all with price oil.
Mm-hmm.
Those are good, those are good bags. Those are good bags. We'd like them. I hear a lot of, from the public about that.
Any comments?
No.
After this vote, uh, some questions from Mr. Kim, but not about this. So, hang on.
All right, uh, at this time, I entertain a motion.
Uh, go ahead.
I move that we approve the awarding of the trash bag bid to Jadcor in an amount not to exceed a hundred and seventeen thousand, three hundred dollars.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, five zero.
Mr. King, I know your record is formidable, uh, with the change in dates of the trash dates, uh, you know, I, I receive one of the letters, fine with me, but is everything working okay? Are you getting pushed back one way or the other? Seems like a minor thing, but to some people, it could be major.
Yeah, we haven't had any complaints. Uh, the main question we've had is people that have Thursday pickup, uh, they're wondering, the ones that have been moved to Monday, if they're still getting their Thursday pickup. That's been the primary concern, and there's been no problems, no complaints. They're, they are getting their Thursday pickup and then a following Monday pickup. So, everybody's getting picked up regular this week, and then next week, everything will change.
Okay.
Well, the important question is, did Carla's date get moved?
Did stay.
I was going, mine wouldn't change, and mine did change.
Mine changed too, yeah.
So, a lot. So, it's, uh, you don't see any real problems, and you're, you'll be much better balanced now?
Yeah, everything will be better balanced.
The crews will be working with just about an eight-hour day or eight or 10-hour day versus sometimes...
We're looking to hire a few more people at the moment, but other than that, uh, yeah, once everything gets completely into place and everything will be just, I think it'll be peachy keen.
Great.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. King.
Next item on the agenda, consider bids for emergency repairs, Limit Street Stormpipe Replacement Project.
Yeah, Mike Cooper again.
On May 23rd of this year, the street department was notified of a pothole on Limit Street, uh, there west of Hughes Road by the Can Works Building. Uh, when staff showed up on site to fill that pothole, they realized, or found that it was actually a sinkhole rather than a pothole. Uh, engineering staff was notified, and then they went out and checked, uh, the sinkhole to see what the exact cause of it was, and found that the crossroad pipe at that location had completely rusted out on the bottom and was starting to collapse. Due to Limit Street being used extensively by a lot of traffic in town and heavily traveled, uh, staff did post some cones around the sinkhole. It's continued to sink, and there is a, a very large depression there in the roadway now, so we've channelized those lanes to, to try and keep traffic away from that area. With it being such a heavily traveled roadway, uh, the need to repair it quickly is, uh, of the utmost importance, so we put together a modified proposal, uh, to get out for bid to, to contractors. We were able to use some of the old plans from the Hughes Road because that system is tied into that, that system and to, uh, kind of dictate what work needed to be done there. So, we sent the proposal out to five contractors. We received three bids back. The bid tabs are listed in your, uh, policy report there, and staff is recommending that Lina Weaver Construction be awarded the, the project with a low bid of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars. Once the roadway is closed, the contractor will have 14 days to get it back open. Since it is an emergency, we told the contractor to go ahead and start the work of getting the inlets required for the project ordered, uh, which will cut about a week to 10 days off of the lead time. There's about a three to four-week lead time on those inlets that we need.
So, you don't think there's a need to block the street off now?
We're watching it every day to see if we have continued deterioration in that crossroad pipe, and if we need to block it off, we will. Right now, it's holding as it is, and we'll see where, where it goes before we get construction started.
As nobody falls in.
Assuming that we, um, approve, make the motion and approve the motion, when do you project the work to begin?
It will still be a couple of weeks away while we get those inlets and everything in.
And there were three, uh, the two other contractors that, that had higher bids were Blue Nile Contractors and Lexico. Where is Blue Nile Contractors? Where are they located?
They're in Birmingham, Missouri, which... And they're actually doing a project for the city currently.
Where is Birmingham? Is it just, you know?
I believe it's up north of Platt City, in that area.
All right.
And Mike, we're looking for the approval of the base bid?
Yes, we're looking for approval of the base bid.
Right.
What was included in the alternate?
The alternate bid was a different pipe.
Okay.
Uh, this project kind of gave us the opportunity to look at some pipes, some new pipes and everything that were out there. Uh, the alternate was a HDPE pipe that is reinforced with steel. Since we hadn't used it before in the city, we thought this would be the, a good opportunity to go ahead and bid it and see how those prices and everything were, and we did find out that it is more expensive than the concrete pipe that we're going to be using as replacement.
All right.
Yeah.
No other comments? I entertain a motion.
I, I move that the city commission approve the low bid submitted by Lina Weaver Construction for the emergency repair of Limit Street Stormpipe Replacement Project in the amount of a hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, five zero.
Quick question, Mr. Cooper. Uh, let's say, let's say we meet tonight, and then there happens to be a fifth Tuesday, and we don't meet again for approximately three weeks. Uh, you know, that has happened a couple of times, and a major thing like this happens, or maybe even, uh, grosser than this one, that constitutes an emergency, it can be a couple hundred thousand dollars. What, what can you do? Do we have to get back in session? Either you'll bring us back in session telephonically, or we'll get here to make these approvals? Uh, how are you, or is that completely handcuff you? Because we can't sit for a couple of weeks.
Under the purchasing policy, it does allow us to make, uh, considerations as far as how we bid projects, like emergencies out, and how we get quotes and everything, so... Uh, we do have some latitude in emergency situations to get prices for, for emergency projects like this.
Okay. Um, I'm just, let's say, the huge sinkhole, Fifth and Delaware closes all of downtown. I mean, you, you'd have to go to work on it almost immediately.
Yes, we do.
So, there is something that you can do without, if it's declared an emergency. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I think Ruby could probably add to this, but, um, the city manager can authorize emergency repairs and, in an actual emergency.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Next item on the agenda, consider, uh, engineering service, services contract with Wilson and Company for second, and Chestnut Drainage System Study.
Mike Cooper.
At the study commission, or study meeting last week, we reviewed the, the conditions of that stormwater system pretty extensively, uh, discussed the issues that we have with it, uh, presented, uh, the proposal from Wilson and Company as, as far as the study that they proposed to do, uh, on that system, to make recommendations for the type of improvements we need to do in the future on this. Uh, this item is for approval of the proposal from Wilson and Company to, uh, start that, uh, that study, and the amount of the study is fifty-four thousand, seven hundred dollars. And, uh, Justin Clout and Charles Loban from Wilson and Company are here if, to answer any questions you may have.
We reviewed on this last week, right?
Last week.
Yes, we reviewed this last week at study session.
I think all my questions were answered, um, then.
Commissioner Priceinger?
Did you ever get any more history on how that drainage, uh, that pipe was built underneath the apartments?
Have not been able to find any more information. We've got the building permit for the, the sixplex. Uh, have no information on when that pipe was put in.
When was the sixplex built, do you know?
In eighty-four.
Eighty-four.
That's when things were passed and loose in the city, right?
Yes.
Before your time.
And, just before, just before my time. There are other buildings in the city that are built over drainage structures like this.
Mr. Passwald, if you're watching or wondering about this.
Yeah.
No other, uh, comments I entertain about this?
I move that we, um, approve the engineering services contract with Wil- Wilson and Company for the second and Chestnut Drainage System Study, um, for the, uh, in, in the amount not to exceed fifty-four thousand, seven hundred for the study.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Priceinger.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, five zero. Next item on the agenda, first consideration ordinance, amending chapter 103, storm water.
Carla Williamson, your city clerk?
Um, yes, this item is a first consideration, um, to amend, um, sections 103 dash one through 103 dash six. Um, at the May 7th study session, the commission agreed by consensus to cut the multifamily rate for stormwater in half from eighty-four dollars per unit to forty-two dollars per unit for those multifamily units, um, that had three units or more. Um, this would keep duplexes at the current rate of eighty-four dollars per unit. And the change requires an amendment to the actual chapter, um, to show how we define a duplex dwelling unit separate from a multifamily dwelling unit, unit. Um, and also, we'll need to make a change to the fee schedule, which will be, um, the next item. Um, but it, they do require two separate, um, ordinances since they're two separate sections of the, um, of the code. So, this one, like I say, just changes, um, to allow us to separate the duplex from a multifamily unit that has more than two or three or more units.
Questions or comments?
No.
No? All right. Do we have a consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
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 All right. Next item on the agenda, first consideration ordinance, amending appendix F, schedule of fees.
So, this is part two of the same, um, issue, and this one is amending, uh, appendix F, the schedule of fees, and that will reflect a duplex, um, remaining at eighty-four dollars per unit, and a multifamily dwelling containing three or more units is forty-two dollars per unit.
I think it's clear on the multifamily dwelling unit, and, but for a duplex, it's, there's two family units within a duplex. Each of those will be charged by eighty-four dollars, correct?
Eighty-four dollars, correct.
I would just, and I don't want to sound pedantic on this, but, um, on the first page, we have, um, uh, 103, all duplex dwelling units, and then it's fee per unit. To me, that's a little confusing. I, I would just say all duplex, all duplex dwellings, and it's fee per unit, which is, there's two units in a duplex, right?
Yeah.
There's, it's, it's just, I don't know. I was reading it pretty closely, but I just don't want there to be... That's why I asked the question, which I knew the answer to, but I would, I would just, that would be a recommendation that I would make, because I think there is a little, at least in my mind, a little confusion on, you know, whether a unit's the two separate, you know, the two family units, or whether it's the entire duplex.
So, you would suggest where I've got all duplex dwelling units, fee per unit, just no?
Why should you just add the word "living" unit?
Well, I think we're trying to stay consistent with the definitions that are in the new revised chapter 103, which defines duplex dwelling unit, and the reason we did that was because, um, we were using the terminology of multifamily dwelling unit, and that was consistent with, uh, some of your planning codes on the terminology being used. Uh, so that's what we did, so that there was a correlation between your zoning and planning regulations using the same language and the same definitions for this.
Okay. I'm not, I'm not going to fall on my sword about it. It's just, I, it's eighty-four dollars for each one of those two family units that make up a duplex, and...
For each unit, just like it would be with a house.
Yeah, and unit is then defined in...
Yeah, well, it's the way, it's the way we define unit, right? And I, I, as I said, I'm not going to fall on my sword about that, but that was my confusion. But, I, I can live with the way we have it.
Comments? If not, do we have a consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda, first consideration ordinance, amending section two dash two six, composition, election, terms of office.
Um, and this is part two, um, the resolution that we, um, that we went over earlier and the commission approved. Um, this is, um, this, the part that would change the actual language in the code of ordinance, um, that, um, would establish, um, the first Tuesday in December as the date that elected officials take office. There's also, also a section there that, um, allows for the transition of, um, commissioners who have a term of office that expires, um, in January 2020. That would, that new term, um, would expire the first Tuesday in December when the new elected officials take office. Um, and the same for anybody who has a term of office that expires currently as January 22nd. It will expire the first Tuesday in December, 2021. So, there's that transition period that we have to account for as well.
Say, say that last one again?
Anybody who has a term of office that currently expires January of 2022.
Okay.
I'm, did I, I may have said that wrong, 2022.
I got you now.
Okay.
So, that'd be, for example, that's Commissioner Griswold and Mayor Wilson.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Comments? If not, do we have a consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
Definitely, yes.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda, first consideration ordinance, amending chapter 74, Parks and Recreation.
Um, and this one is a first consideration, um, for chapter 74, Parks and Recreation. This was discussed at the June 4th study session. Um, this was part of going over the codification of, um, the entire code book, and this was one of the chapters that, um, was very sparse in what it had, um, for Parks and Recreation. And so, we just expanded on it to put into the code what current regulations and current, uh, policies are already in place for the Parks Department. So, there's not really anything that we, was reinvented, it's just putting on, in the code what's already being done.
There's no comments, uh, consensus to move this forward as well?
Yes.
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 Commissioner Bowder, consent agenda?
Yes, um, after financial review of the claims, I move the claims for May 25, 2019, through June 7, 2019, in the amount of one million, nine hundred and fifteen thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars and eleven cents. The approved net amount for payroll, number 12, effective June 7, 2019, in the amount of three hundred and thirty-three thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars and thirty-nine cents. No police or fire pension.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Priceinger.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, before we adjourn... Motion carried, before we adjourn the meeting, I noticed that we have a few individuals that would like to say something, come up to the podium. We ask that you state your first and last name, please. Right there at the podium, right there.
Please forgive my appearance, I just got off work cutting down a massive tree. But my name is Jed Knighton and I am here.
Just state your address, please.
791 Spruce. And I am here in reference to the house at 795 Spruce, which is on the demolition list. And I know that I had been sent notices in reference to that. We are a small church at 791 Spruce. And the house next door, we've been working on that house since, since I've been pastor at that church. What the deal is, is that for the last year and three months, I had been out of town working, doing some remodeling at a motel. So I just, was just kind of in on Sundays. So some of the correspondence that they wanted from me, I was not able to really do because of the time of restraints. Because most of the time I was just really in on Sundays and back out. So, but now I finished my jobs out of town and I'm back in town and been here for about a month. And we, we don't want the building demolished because, oh well, since I've been pastor for the last three plus years, I have did extensive work on the inside. When we got the letter about, you know, the outside, there was really not a whole lot I could do being out of town working. But we have, it's got new insulation on the inside, it's got new sheet rock in the ceilings. It's got new fixtures in the bathroom. The utility room was the first room I totally finished. So the utility room is totally finished. I started on the inside out, so although it's not windows that you can see on the outside, I've got everything framed on the inside to set the new windows in when we get them. Our finances are pretty, pretty poor. If you would allow me, Marjorie Green, she's the church mother and the church secretary. And she and I are the only ones that really deal with business at hand because the members that we do have, they live in Kansas City, Missouri. So, so she and I are the only ones that take care of any business at the church. And unfortunately, I've been out of town for a year and three months, but now I'm back.
Well, it would have been nice if she would have called us. I know I talked to her on the phone and I appreciated the time and, and I know you thought I was going to call you back too, but I never told her that. I said I was going to talk to our city manager about it. But I, I wish you'd have called us and, and told us about the work you were doing on it because we do give extensions from time to time.
Well, you know.
But, but you know, it takes how many months that we put this stuff out? You know, that we, that we're, you know, the code enforcement puts it out.
Right.
They send letters and, you know, I, I just didn't understand why you couldn't call us and talk to us about this.
Well, I did not know and I still don't know who to talk to until I called around. But I did talk to Lee on two occasions and I did talk to Michelle. And I did let them know that we are fixing the building. They said, well, your inside fixing is not what the city wants. And I did understand that. But at the time, it's nothing I could do from working out of town.
Quick question, sir.
Yeah.
When do, when do you think you can make some repairs to the outside?
On the, on the outside, all I know is that if I know exactly what would suffice the city, if it's a matter of just putting windows in.
You should have a list from, from our code enforcement office.
Well, I, I don't have the list on hand.
Mr. Knighton, were you offered a remediation agreement to sign? Were you offered a remediation agreement?
A list of things that you have to fix that you signed off on.
Yeah, here I have a copy of a remediation agreement. And I don't know if you refused to sign it or just didn't sign it. What, does any, Mr. Tetter, do you know any details?
Our code enforcement staff said that they did offer it.
And?
And it was not signed.
I wasn't, I wasn't available, sir. You know, the, this is what I'm saying, I've been out of town for the last year and three months working. So I really wasn't available by the time I was in Leavenworth at that time, was on a Sunday for church. So a lot of things I missed out on, okay? Because, you know, that's all I'm simply saying. But what I'm saying is that if, for someone on that list, because for me, remembering a little bit, I think it was just saying that the windows can't be boarded up. And it does have one new window in the bathroom. And, and it did have holes in the roof in which I did fix the roof. So there has been some outside done, we just hadn't put the windows in. So what I'm asking you all is to just let me know what is required in order to get it off the demo list and within a month's time, it'll be done, you know?
Why don't you get in contact with our code enforcement officer, which is Julie, she's upstairs. And get a remediation agreement signed.
Okay.
And get a date on it and then that will come back to us.
Okay.
And we'll make our decision then.
In the meantime, we need to stop, right?
So in the meantime, you already passed the ordinance for the demolition? So there's no way to do a remediation agreement at this point?
You'd have to go back and do an ordinance amending.
No way.
What kind of time did we give it?
30 days?
60 days, 90 days?
No, we did not give it an extension.
No, this is the last one, it's in the middle of demolition, right?
It's going through the demolition process.
Yeah, the utilities have been disconnected, but the sewer cap has not been completed yet.
What can we do?
I, I would ask that we do nothing right here if things are the way they are. And we ask for the staff to get with us on, you know, what all has happened. And there's nothing we should do at this point. I just think there's too much influx of remediation agreements offered, they weren't signed. So we had no option but to move on the demolition. So let's.
Yeah, I can put it, put together a memo for you and then you can decide what you want to do moving forward at a future meeting if, if you need to.
So temporarily, temporarily we put, we put the demolition on hold.
We're not taking action right now, but contact Ms. Tori.
I mean, is it going to be demolished tomorrow?
No, it hasn't been ordered yet, so.
Okay, good.
So it, it has some, a little bit of time.
Because I, I would like, I agree, I think the staff needs to come back, back to us, but.
Everything's in, in motion right now and that I'm interested in hearing staff on all that has happened and report.
Esther, did you ever receive any mail from the city?
We received the, we received a letter that the building needed to be repaired. We did, we did receive that.
Why didn't you take action on it at that time?
I'm, I'm just like I said, I was in and out of town, I was so busy until I just, I dropped the ball. I, I admit, I admit that I did, I, I didn't really understand the, the urgency of it, being, being new in town, being new in the city. And I really didn't understand because I do know in Kansas City that if your windows are boarded up, it's, it, it helps you because of vandalism. And they don't, they don't require that. And after your paint is peeling, they say you got the paint, but they, boarding up the windows was never a problem.
That's been how long?
There were communities still with them.
Yeah, yeah, every, every community did.
How long since it's been occupied?
Since it's been occupied? That I'm not sure of, I would have to ask code enforcement, but from a Google Street View, it's been boarded up since.
It's gone by there for years since it's been boarded up.
And so we can't take any action right now, but we're going to get some information back from our staff, see what we can do, all right?
Okay.
Contact the city tomorrow, Ms. Julie.
She, is she in the office?
Julie Hurley, yeah.
He can contact me, we've been in contact.
Tetter is.
Okay.
And I just encourage you, just start making repairs now to the outside.
Okay, okay, okay. And then she would tell me what's required, right?
Mr. Tetter.
Yes.
Mr. Tetter would tell me what's required.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you for coming to us.
Yes, sir, thank you. Anybody else would like to speak?
Hi, I am, I'm Justin Barwick, the owner of the Retro Kid Arcade. And I wanted to come in and say thank you to all of you for the consideration you gave to us by waiving the fee that would have prevented us from actually coming into Leavenworth. I mean, I was looking forward to it from the moment, but when I talked to Taylor about it in the first piece, I'm like, wow, there's, that would prevent me, there's no way with that much startup cost that we could come into the community. And now that we are in the community, it's been embraced and.
Great.
We look forward to helping the community any way we can, the council also. We'd like to invite all of you to come out to the arcade and have a night on us and be able to find out what it's like. And we look forward to being in the community for a very long time and helping any way we can with the children.
I mean, we've got a short meeting tonight, you might if we come out tonight afternoon.
I'll go up in the arcade, I got no problems with it.
We're glad you're here. But you know that we cannot accept a night on you.
Where is the, where is your business located?
322 Delaware Street.
Good, a good addition. Thank you very much, thanks for your investment. Is it working out well?
So far, yes.
Probably one of his best customers.
I'll take you on a pinball.
All right, thank you, man, appreciate it. Any other comments, Commissioner Bowder?
Yes, I would just like to say something about mosquitoes. And I know we are saving a lot of money by not spraying mosquitoes, but I think it would be really, really nice if we put some blurbs out there on all the social media that we have about people dumping the water that's standing in their yards to try to prevent mosquito infestation. I just think it's, it's, it's a good thing, just a good reminder for people.
And there is the alternate treatment of larva side, right?
Well, that is, yeah, oh, yeah. And you can buy at the hardware store, you can get the dunks, you can put in your, like I do in my birdbath, I put a dunk in there and the mosquitoes don't get in there, so.
Repeat that again, so the citizens know?
Dunks, you can get a dunk at the hardware store, they're called dunks. That's what they're called, yeah.
And the city is continuing the larva side program where we have tablets in the creeks and other water areas. So, so we're not, we haven't stopped treating for mosquitoes, it's just a different method.
It's just not the spray now, so people, people take care of their houses.
Commissioner Price?
I just want to congratulate the city and I know you were involved, Mayor Wilson, on the kickoff of Camp Leavenworth. You know, I think the buzz has started and I think it's going to be a very positive event. And I'm sure there'll be more buildup until it actually hits in mid-September. I'm looking forward to it and I think a lot of citizens are looking forward to it. So thank you for doing that.
Commissioner Griswold? Well, it's definitely going to be great. Discover your worth by coming to Camp Leavenworth. Just rolls right off the tongue, but, but no, I have nothing. But thank you all for coming out this evening. Motion to adjourn the meeting? Motion has been seconded, begin voting with Commissioner Price.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, five Z, rural, meeting adjourned. Discover your worth by coming to.